All ready?
Yes, sir.
Buckingham County Board of Supervisors meeting to be called to order at this time on September the fourteenth. We do have a form, we got seven of seven. Allen, would you give the implication and pledge allegiance for us?
Yes, sir.
Stand, please.
Let us pray. Dear Lord, thank you for letting each and every one of us come here tonight. Pray you watch over us in each and everything we do and say that will be done in thy name and thy will to help the county and to be in a better position. In Jesus' name I pray, amen.
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 All sisters join me in pledging allegiance to the flag of our country. I pledge allegiance to the flag-
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This time we want to welcome a new board member that's been appointed to take Mr. Jones's place. Davis, we-
Can I help you, James?
Certainly congratulate you and have some big shoes to fill, and I know you can do it. And we certainly want to work with you, and we want you to be a team member, a team player. Thanks for being here.
Thank y'all for having confidence in appointing you to the board.
Motion for approval of agenda?
Don't move, Mr. Chairman.
Second. Motion made in second, approval of agenda. Any questions? All in favor?
Bryant?
Yes.
Matthews?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Bryan?
Yes.
Allen?
Yes.
Miles?
Yes.
Chambers?
Yes.
Motion unanimous? Approval of the minutes, have a motion for that?
Don't move.
Second.
Motion made in second, approval of minutes, end of discussion. Call for the vote.
Bryant?
Yes.
Matthews?
Yes.
Davis?
Abstain.
Bryan?
Yes.
Allen?
Yes.
Miles?
Yes.
Chambers?
Yes.
Motion carried, six and one abstained. Approval of claims, I have a question on the claims right now. On, I don't know what page it is, but guess it's probably the second page. There's a thing there from Hillam Motors that says oil change and don't take tire, six hundred and twenty-two dollars. Know what that saw?
Thirty-two dollars.
Thirty-two dollars, yes.
It's about four.
Sometimes it's not enough room to put everything they do on that line.
It's about seven, I'm making a row.
Yeah.
Chairman, what that is, I'm sorry so loud. The accounts payable system only has like a certain line, so it was more than just those two things. So it's probably a big long bill, but you're going to put in this amount of space on that line. So that's why I just said tire change and oil change, but it's a lot more done to the vehicle than that. And we can pull the invoice and get everything that was listed on there. But it's an issue of space, you can't get all the description on there.
Approval of claims?
Don't move, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
Second, approval of claims, all in favor?
Bryant?
Yes.
Matthews?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Bryan?
Yes.
Allen?
Yes.
Miles?
Yes.
Chambers?
Yes.
Motion carried unanimous. Approval of second quarter appropriations?
Don't move.
Second. Sorry.
Second. Discussion. Call for the vote.
Bryant?
Yes.
Matthews?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Bryan?
Yes.
Allen?
Yes.
Miles?
Yes, ma'am.
Chambers?
Yes.
Motion carried unanimous. Announcement, reminder that the October board meeting is scheduled for Tuesday, October the thirteenth, due to Monday, the twelfth being a holiday. Open now for public comments.
No one has signed up, but we did get one email. And it is from Susan Browning of Oak Hill Road. She says, "I have reviewed the draft noise ordinance, and I feel that is absolutely unnecessary and unjustified for Buckingham County. Buckingham is unique in that it has remained almost entirely rural. If we, the residents, wanted to live in an urban setting with urban policies such as noise ordinance, we would not have settled or stayed in Buckingham. While most of the exceptions to the proposed ordinance are entirely appropriate for the character of the county, I find that their inclusion confuses the need for the noise ordinance as they practically nullify the ordinance in and of itself. I had a difficult time thinking of any types of noise other than the obvious reference of automobiles with loud mufflers and stereo systems and number C under prohibitions to which the proposed ordinance would apply. I also found several specific difficulties with this ordinance as it applies to Buckingham. There are a wide variety of property uses and sizes scattered and adjacent to each other throughout the whole of the county. Sweeping restrictions such as those regarding when certain noises can occur between 6:00 a.m. and 10:00 p.m. cannot be applied equally or fairly across these very intermingled community types. I also have a specific objection to thirteen under exceptions which imposes restrictions on the discharge of firearms. First, I feel that it violates my constitutional rights, and it is in direct conflict with the county's recent resolution concerning state gun control laws. Secondly, I feel that it violates my personal freedom to exercise my legal rights on my lawfully owned and appropriately zoned property. Furthermore, the wording is vague. How do you quantify the two hours every six hours? Does it refer to sustained or cumulative discharges? How are those quantities defined? And again, how can these restrictions be applied fairly and locally and even located accurately across so many different hollis property types? As a large rural county with a limited number of enforcement officials and noise ordinance would be extremely problematic to administer effectively. In order to legally charge an entity with violation, the enforcement official must arrive on site during the noise event, have time to evaluate and measure the noise. This would be nearly impossible in most cases. Finally, there are no examples of noises that typically fall below the DBA, nor any examples of noises that predictably rise above the DBA. With no references or comparison examples, residents will not know whether or not they are violating the ordinance. To protect the health, welfare, safety, and quality of life for inhabitants of the county, any adopted noise ordinance should directly target those entities that have no personal vested interest in the county only, such as individuals and companies whose activities cause unnecessary excessive harmful and annoying noise pollution. I strongly submit that the only noise ordinance that should be considered is one that would place such stringent restrictions on certain types of noise pollution as to prohibit or deter such entities from establishing operations here. And that is all.
That all you have?
That's all I have.
Okay, thank you. Next thing we have is to help us set up a public hearing for the consideration of Article nine of Buckingham County zoning ordinance.
Mr. Wright is going to address that introduction.
There he comes.
Chairman, it was at the request of consideration after consultation with Cityscape, which is the advisor to the county for the cell towers here in the county, that they suggested we consider adding these amendments to the ordinance. The purpose of the ordinance, of these amendments to the ordinance is to reduce the chances of a spec tower being added here in the county. As you can see, there are fairly minor changes. The idea is that to have to make certain certifications in order to, before you'd get a permit to build a tower. So the general notion is to just cut out on the chances, you can't eliminate it entirely, but to cut out on the chances of spec tower. And you say, "What's wrong with the spec tower?" It ties up the space. Over the years that I've been doing this, there's been one company that made applications, got a whole lot of towers approved, and very few of them got built. We had one situation where we gave permits. They were supposed to expire. That company, along with others, went to the general stem and got them extended. So the idea is we're trying to keep the lane as narrow as we can to make sure that space does not get tied up when somebody comes along and says, "We're already committed there, so I can't do anything." But the tower never gets built. That's the purpose of the amendments.
Pleasure.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we set a public hearing for Tuesday, October thirteenth on Article nine of the zoning ordinance.
This is the public hear-
This is the public hearing.
We have drawn emergency orders.
On emergency basis and set it for a public hearing for tonight. And so this is the public hearing, so you're in a position to go ahead and take action on it if you're so inclined.
This time the public hearing is open then. I want to say, evidence comments, and the public hearing is closed then.
Do you want to make your-
You can. Mr. Chairman, I move that we accept the recommendations for the revisions to Article nine as presented.
Second.
Made in second, that revision to the Article nine, Buckingham County zoning ordinance. Motion made in second, end of discussion. Call for the vote.
Bryan?
Yes.
Matthews?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Bryan?
Yes.
Allen?
Yes.
Miles?
Yes.
Chambers?
Yes.
Motion made, carried unanimous. Vote Madus, V. Dot.
Good evening, Board, Chairman, how are you guys doing tonight?
All right.
All right, good evening.
Oh, Scott.
Good to be here, thank you for having me. I got a quick update for you guys. Been nice that we've had a little reprieve from some of the rain that we've been having. It looks like we might have some more coming. We've been working real hard to finish up the two rural rustic projects that we have going on in the county, six seventy-six Ridge Road and six seventy-three River Ridge Road. We should have both of those finished up hopefully by the middle of next week. We've been putting tar and gravel down on those. We're on our second, we do two layers, we're on our second layer. So as soon as we, you know, get that completed, those roads will be essentially done. I just want to make a point to say that once we get done building those roads, we do go ahead and put speed limit thirty-five miles per hour signs up. You know, gravel roads in this state are already at thirty-five mile per hour. And once we get done building leaves, we go ahead and have studied and have them posted at thirty-five, which is really no change from what the law is for gravel roads. Those roads are kind of, you know, it's a build-in-place type job, so they're really, thirty-five is about as fast as you'd want to go on one after it's built anyway. We finished our primary mowing last Wednesday, and we switched back over to mowing our secondary route. So you'll be seeing our mowers on the less-traveling backroads for a few weeks till we get those completed. We've been having to cut the grass mower this year with it being so wet this summer. We did some ditching work on six ninety. We have some ditches out there that tend to get full quickly, so we were out there and got those ditched out last week. We've been touching up our gravel roads throughout the county, and we've been grading them and adding gravel. We finally got the break in the weather that I've mentioned a couple times, so it's the perfect time to get those touched up before we get into winter. We've also been cutting some brushback on secondaries throughout the county. And then the only other thing that I wanted to mention is that Crescent Road, you guys brought to my attention a while back. And we got it put in the schedule, and then the week we went to do it, we had trouble getting asphalt ordered. Something about the plant was making a certain kind of mix, and they had it all dedicated to a certain big project somewhere. And we just weren't able to get the asphalt the day that we had it scheduled to do it. So we haven't forgot about it, we're trying to get it worked back into our schedule. So I wanted to mention that. But I also wanted to just ask you guys if you had any new issues that you wanted to bring to my attention.
Yes, sir, I do, Scott, this is Don Matthews, District Three.
Hey Supervisor Matthews, go ahead.
I've had a complaint from a citizen on Paradise Road. I think you've looked at that situation. And with all this rain that we're talking about, that's a pretty steep grade coming down that hill. And I'm not saying it, I mean, I don't know, I'm not an engineer, but it looks like we could put some type of, I don't know, maybe some type of ditch to deter the water off when it starts running off of the road so it's not full force when it gets to the bottom of the hill where this piece of property is. But anyway, I've been getting some phone calls about that again, so I don't know what you can do or if you can do anything. But I'd really like to take-
Yeah, if it's the location, if it's the location I'm thinking about, I was out there a month or two ago and looked at it.
Yeah.
And I, the road kind of comes out of like a curve right there, so
Yeah.
Our roadway channels the water away from the property I think you're talking about. But we've got several phone calls ourselves, and we were out there this afternoon actually and had looked at it. And there's some talk now, like you're talking about, seeing if we can do something to make less water make it to the bottom of the hill. And we've got more staff scheduled to go out tomorrow morning to take a second look at it. So I'll keep you posted as we move forward, but we're not against doing a ditch of some sort. In the past, we offered to build a berm at that location as sort of like a good faith effort to see if we could help the problem. And that was kind of refused at the time. So we're not against trying to correct a water issue if there is one. We actually did some survey work out there and shot grades. And there really isn't any evidence that the road is sending water that direction at the bottom of the hill. I understand what you're talking about further uphill, you know, maybe if there's something we can do up there. But I'll keep you posted as we move forward.
Okay, thank you, I appreciate it.
Mr. Chairman, I've got two quick issues. Mr. Scott, with regards, I want to thank y'all for the right-of-way cutting that y'all have been doing, especially up and down sixty and at Sprouse's Corner. One question I did have is that when do you think we're going to be able to be in a position to take a look and approve the six-year improvement plan?
Those six-year plans are kind of still on hold, to be honest. We were working pretty hard to go ahead and do public hearings, and we were, you know, just trying to schedule work sessions and talking with you guys back February, March time period. The direction I got then was to kind of, you know, they said kind of get to a logical stopping point and stop because they were, you know, weren't sure what the pandemic situation we're in, you know, at what point we're going to be able to move forward. And I haven't heard anything different since. We did talk about it three or four weeks ago internally in a meeting, and that was still the same guidance. So as soon as I hear something, I'll let you know. I can't really speak to like, you know, a specific date or anything. I will say that that program will continue. It's been very clear that, you know, it's not something we're going to back away from. That's like a, you know, there's legislation in place to ensure that we work, you know, hand in hand with the county to get our roads built. So it's something, it's not going to go away, but I just, I don't know when the program, when we're going to, you know, go ahead press that pause button to get it moving forward again.
Yes, sir.
It's still on pause at the moment.
Right, part of the reason I asked is because of all the technology that we in other counties have. I would hate to keep holding it up.
Yeah, I get what you're saying there, but I just don't know, I just don't know the answer to the question, to be honest. I could certainly ask if there's anything we can do to make it start up again as soon as possible. It's statewide on pause, it's not just specific to Buckingham by any means.
I've got a question too, Scott, this is Don Matthews again, District Three, in reference to
Yes, sir.
what Mr. Miles has just mentioned, the six-year plan. I have a citizen that contacted me earlier this year, it's Allen Rosen Road. And he said that that particular road was put on the six-year plan before I was on the Board of Supervisors. So that means it was on there over six years ago. And they went in and sloped the road this year and put some stone on it. And he called me one afternoon really irate about it. He wants to know when they're going to pave it or surface treat it. And I told him, you know, that those things are scheduled way out and it's, you know, there is money dedicated to certain roads and certain amounts of money. You just don't go in and pick a road to do that. So can you check on that road, Allen Rosen Road, for me that's on, that should be on our six-year plan? And maybe email me sometime and let me know what the status of that is and when it may be coming up?
Yeah, I'd be happy to. I wrote down the name Allen Rosen Road, like A.L.L.E.N.R.O.S.E.N. Is that properly spelled?
Yes, sir. I can't remember the road number, but
Yeah, yeah, I mean, we work kind of hand in hand with y'all. I don't pick the roads, it's completely up to the Board. So if it was before you were a supervisor six years ago, certainly it could have worked its way through that pipeline by now. But I will check to see if it's on the proposed six-year plan that is currently on pause, the one that we were working on back in the spring. And I'll happily call you or email you and let you know if it's on there or not. And, you know, how far out, if it is on there, how far out is it?
All right, thank you, I appreciate it.
No problem. Mr. Miles, did you say you had two things you wanted to ask?
Yes, sir, and the other question, I guess, since you, since I've got the opportunity, was Troublesome Creek Road in terms of some of the roadway that's crumbling there in some portions and the restaurant or attraction sign on Route sixty on the east side, which, at the intersection of six ninety.
Okay, I was actually out and about in Buckingham today, and I meant to ride Troublesome Creek Road.
It's got several places where it's crumbling. There's grass growing in the tracks.
Yeah, you brought that to my attention in the past, and I had sent it to the area headquarters and asked them to, you know, take a look at it. So you've probably written it more recently than me since I didn't get up there to today to ride it. But I'll check on the status of it and let you know. If there's any spots that are falling apart, obviously we're going to fix them.
Yes, sir, thank you, Scott.
Some roads are just, you know, have some cracks in them, but if, you know, if it's pothole-type situation, then we'll get it taken care of.
Hey, Scott.
Yes, sir.
Yes, Donnie Bryan, District Two. Can you, when you get a chance, take a look around about sixty-nine thirty-nine on Bell Road? The road is slanted kind of hard right there, it's in a corner, and the water runs, and it kind of ponds up because, you know, the grass and stuff is grown along the ditch line, and it's not able to make that ditch. So could you guys take a look at it? You may have to cut that ditch back where it's draining down.
Okay, yeah, sixty-nine thirty-nine Bell Road.
Yeah, it's like right there in that corner.
I see. Okay. Yeah, I'd be happy, we'll take a look at it, and we'll see if we can do some work there with the ditch.
Okay, appreciate it.
You're saying possibly cut the bank back or something?
Any other number, have anything for the V. Dot? Thank you, Scott, appreciate it.
Yeah, thank you, Chairman, you guys have a great night, thanks for letting me participate.
Same, stay safe.
You too, thank you.
This is Nikki Edmiston, zoning administrator.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the Board. So tonight I actually have four cases. The first one is going to be the introduction of case twenty ZMA two seven five. This is from Jason Vaughn, it's a request to rezone this particular parcel from A-one to B-one. Landowner and applicant is Jason Vaughn, he lives at twenty-one forty-four Manio Road, Buckingham, Virginia two three nine two one. The tax map is forty-six forty-three, contains approximately twenty-eight acres. It's located at forty-one thirty-seven Warminster Church Road here in Buckingham, James River Magisterial District and at State Route seven thirty-seven. His request is a zoning map amendment. Mr. Vaughn is asking the Board of Supervisors to recommend a public hearing date to hear the request from rezoning from A-one agriculture to B-one business for the purpose of business expansion and to represent the true usage of the parcel. The background tonight, Mr. Vaughn recently acquired this property and the three grandfather commercial buildings that are existing. The previous landowner operated a cabinetry business and offered warehousing in many storage facilities. Mr. Vaughn is continuing operations of the cabinet business, which is building one in the site plan, intends to offer storage and office space, which is building two in your site plan. And by way of special use permit application and approval, he intends to operate an auto sales shop and auto garage in Building Three. Mr. Vaughn has completely renovated Buildings One and Two, and Building Three is currently under renovation. This rezoning request would allow Mr. Vaughn to utilize the entire parcel for commercial use. Mr. Vaughn is the owner and operator of Vaughn's Improvements LLC and has an employee base of fifteen at this time. Rezoning would allow for business expansion and the ability to hire up to ten more individuals to include salesmen, mechanics, and a setup crew. The Buckingham County Planning Commission held a public hearing on August twenty-fourth, twenty twenty- The Buckingham County Planning Commission held a public hearing on August twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty for Case Twenty ZMA Two Seven Five. All Planning Commission members were present with the exception of Alice Gormas, who was unable to attend. There were two letters read at the meeting, both submitted electronically, not in favor of the request. One letter submitted electronically in support of this request and three citizens spoke at the meeting. Two citizens spoke with concern in regard to this case and the remaining citizens spoke in favor of this case and to support this economic growth. The Planning Commission heard comments, but after much discussion with Mr. Vaughn and his willingness to address citizen concerns, unanimously voted in favor of the request and recommend approval of this request. Also, please note my error, that the conditions listed were approved but are listed in error and should not be on the introduction and that this request stands without conditions. Would it be the pleasure of the board to set up a public hearing, possibly on October thirteenth, twenty-twenty?
Have a motion for, have a public hearing on, uh, October the thirteenth? Don't move, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
Motion made, second, in the discussion. All for the vote. Yes.
Matthews.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Bryan.
Yes.
Alan.
Yes.
Miles.
Yes.
Chambers.
Yes.
All unanimous, have a special use, uh, have a public hearing? Have another one?
I do, the next introduction is of Case Twenty Sup Two Seven Eight, uh, Two Seven Six, excuse me. This, once again, is Jason Vaughn. His request is for a special use permit to operate a warehouse and many storage facility. Um, this is at the same property, forty-one thirty-seven Warminster Church Road, Tax Map Parcel Forty-Six Forty-Three, State Route Seven Thirty-Seven. It is the same background and zoning information, there are twelve conditions listed. And this, um, public hearing was held on August twenty-fourth for Case Twenty Sup Two Seven Six by the Planning Commission. Now, this particular, um, case is contingent upon the approval of the previous case, which was Twenty ZMA Two Seven Five. Currently, if it were to stay in its zoning of A-one, this is not, um, a usage by right or with a special use permitted in A-one. So this particular request of Twenty Sup Two Seven Six is contingent upon the case you just approved for public hearing, the Twenty ZMA Two Seven Five. And once again, would it be the pleasure of the board to set a public hearing for this case?
Have a motion, we have.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
That will be on the thirteenth also.
Yes, sir.
Discussion, all for the vote.
Bryan.
Yes.
Matthews.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Bryan.
Yes.
Alan.
Yes.
Miles.
Yes.
Chambers.
Yes.
Are unanimous.
We have another case, Twenty ZTA Sup Two Seven Seven, this is for Jason Vaughn, once again. His request is to add a zoning text amendment for mobile home sales office, mobile home sales to lot to B-one Business Zoning District and apply for a special use permit for that request. Once again, this is parcel Forty-Six Forty-Three, the twenty-eight acres on forty-one thirty-seven Warminster Church Road here in Buckingham on Seven Thirty-Seven. Same parcel and property for Case ZMA Two Seven Five and Sup Two Seven Six. He's asking the Planning Commission to recommend a public hearing to hear the request of adding that zoning text amendment for mobile home, home sales office and sales lot to B-one zoning district and apply for a special use permit for that purpose. This particular request is also contingent upon Case Twenty ZMA Two Seven Five. Because once again, this is not a by right or a special use permit usage currently listed in an A-one. Please understand that this would be adding a zoning text amendment to a B-one if this were to move further because we do not have this particular use in the list of special use permits in a B-one. Would it be the pleasure of the board to set a public hearing for Case Twenty ZTA Sup Two Seven Seven?
Got a question, Mr. Chairman, regarding the auto sales shop and the auto garage, which is building three in the site plan, Ms. Edmiston, is that right?
Uh-huh.
Wait, is there, are there any conditions in here? And I haven't been able to see any by, by reading and looking at it with regards, with regards to the number of vehicles that can be kept on the property.
It is not, because as it's currently listed, if this were to be rezoned to a B-one, then that's a permitted use. If they do not follow local ordinance, which would be, for example, too many junk cars, then as zoning officer, myself and Lynn Hill, the enforcement officer, would then take the necessary action and precautions to have the business owner remove cars that are inoperable, that would constitute a junkyard.
Yes, ma'am, and that's included in the first condition that, that all the regulations, including local, be adhered to, right? Okay, I just want to clarify that, thank you.
But twenty-eight acres is the whole total thing?
Yes, sir.
If only got two acres cleared, but we're gonna make all twenty-eight acres?
At this time, and Jason's not here to, Mr. Vaughn is not here to speak to that, but he was asked that same question at the Planning Commission last month. At this time, because of the wooded buffer, he indicated that he does not have a plan to completely clear the twenty-eight acres. He only wanted enough, um, space behind Buildings One, Two and Three to have a mobile home sales lot and office. He did understand, because he was also asked, um, if he was going to have a trade-in yard or a holding yard for mobile homes, that is not, um, his intent. He said that he would have one to two set up for sale and display, but that he did not want to take trade-ins, um, for mobile homes. So I know that that has been a concern in regard to single wides, double wides and, and businesses of that nature. But he had indicated he would keep the natural buffer in that wooded lot.
That's twenty-six acres or is?
Twenty-eight acres.
It's twenty-eight acres, he's, uh, have.
Then he has two now, so you're gonna keep twenty-six as a wooded buffer?
He did not indicate that he wanted to clear cut a portion of this, but this would, the B-one would allow him, should he, should he so choose, without conditions specifically set, to utilize the full parcel.
How many, Mr. Chairman, I've got a question, how many mobile homes could he have on the lot?
Well, if he's gonna have a display office, there's nothing in our ordinance that says he can't have X number. So this is where it's very specific, if you, if you do choose to move this forward and this is a zoning text amendment that you want to grant as Board of Supervisors, this is where you would place your conditions. And this would also be listed as a zoning text amendment under special use permits. So each application that were to come to the county would ultimately come before the Board of Supervisors for specific conditions.
Any other discussion? A motion, we, all for a public hearing on October thirteenth?
I've got a question, Mr. Chairman, since we should, I mean, if, let me ask a question to my fellow board members. Would it, what, what are y'all's feelings on the number of mobile homes on this lot? Is it a concern, is it not a concern, is it? I'm just asking for the sake of what y'all's thoughts are. That's, well, on, on what we're rezoned, on this request for the, I mean, not the ZTA, but the, um.
ZTA.
Yeah, the ZTA, thank you, yeah.
Well, most of the people got more than one display, so, you know, I don't think we should limit.
Sure, I'm just, I'm just asking.
I got no problem with it.
Representative Miles, Supervisor Miles, may I just add, should there be a specific condition in regards to the number of display or the number of houses that are sitting vacant? Please, once again, make the conditions very specific in regard to how you'd like. If this were something that you were to move favorably, please add, amend, um, conditions that would, um, illustrate exactly.
He's saying he's not gonna take trade-ins, so do we need to be explicit with that in the?
I mean, I, I would, because, you know, if we remove Mr. Vaughn and have any nature of business, anyone who starts a business now who doesn't know how they're going to, to grow in the next couple of years along with their business plan could say, no, I'm not. But there may be, um, revenue that could be generated from those trade-ins for resale. So if that's something that you don't, I mean, an individual that's giving you their word, that's all they know at that particular time. So if it's a condition that you want to set and say, no, it will never be allowed, what's going to be binding will be the conditions that are set. So these twelve that I've put here are suggestions, anything you want to add, amend, make more specific? This is, these will be the rules that will be followed.
Deny?
No, this, I'm asking you to set a public hearing, but if you'd like to add, amend the conditions that are there, please do so.
We could even limit.
Set the public hearing.
The twenty-eight acres down to.
You could.
Two acres.
Mm-hmm. You can make it X number of feet parallel to or from the road or those type of things, yes.
Okay.
Motion, Mr. Chairman, we set the public hearing.
I second that.
Motion made, and second, we have a public hearing on October the thirteenth. Any other discussion? All for the vote.
Bryan.
Yes.
Matthews.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Bryan.
Yes.
Alan.
Yes.
Miles.
Yes.
Chambers.
Yes.
Very, uh, made in current, uh, unanimous decision? Ms. Edmiston, we have one more, I think.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, we do. Um, we have an introduction of Case Twenty ZTA Sup Two Seven Eight, this is for Jason Meeks. His request tonight is to add a zoning text amendment for a professional services office to A-one Agricultural Zoning District and apply for a special use permit for that purpose. Jason and Corey Meeks at eight twenty-nine School Road, Dillon, are our landowners and applicants. The specific property in question tonight for this introduction is, uh, Parcel Two Oh Seven Three. It contains approximately ten point three eight acres, it's at nineteen seventy-nine South James Madison Highway, Farmville, Virginia, Two Three Nine Oh One, which is Highway Fifteen in the Curdsville Magisterial District. This property, um, is located in the southern portion of Buckingham County. The zoning ordinance currently does not list a professional services office as a use provided by a special use permitted in an A-one zoning district. This request is to add professional services office as a zoning text amendment to a list of special uses or a list of uses permitted by a special use permit and apply for a special use permit for that purpose. This parcel was previously owned by Mary Bates and in August two thousand, the rezoning request from A-one to B-one, one hundred feet parallel to State Highway Fifteen was approved. Thus, the operation of the store could continue, but the farmhouse behind the store would retain its A-one zoning. Mr. Meeks will operate a professional services office, his real estate sales and service, in the farmhouse behind the store. The zoning ordinance does not currently include a professional service off, um, office, as I've mentioned before, and this is what he would like to add by way of this zoning text amendment. The Buckingham County Planning Commission held a public hearing on August twenty-fourth for Case Twenty ZTA Sup Two Seven Eight. All Commission members were present with the exception of Alice Gormas. One citizen commented in favor of this request, the Planning Commission unanimously voted in favor of this request and recommend approval. Would it be the pleasure of the board to set a public hearing? And once again, this is a zoning text amendment to an A-one zoning district and a request to, um, apply for a special use permit for that purpose.
So moved, uh, Mr. Chairman.
A motion made, if we have a public hearing on October thirteenth?
Second.
For a second? Any other discussion? All for the vote.
Bryan.
Yes.
Matthews.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Bryan.
Yes.
Alan.
Yes.
Miles.
Yes.
Chambers.
Yes.
Thank you all, that's all I have.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Edmiston. Presentation, I know presentation scheduled at this time. Department agencies reporting items of consideration. On ask, consider, getting a public hearing for October thirteenth meeting to consider revisions FY twenty twenty-one budget due to CARES funding? Oh, who is that?
Yes, sir, the, uh, county did receive two million nine hundred ninety-two thousand one hundred and ninety-four dollars in federal COVID funds. And anytime that you increase your budget by, it's a certain percentage, but any more than five hundred thousand dollars, you do have to have a public hearing to amend that budget. So, um, Carl has demonstrated there on the budget sheet where the CARES money has been put in on the revenue side as a federal revenue CARES Act funding and on the expense side, uh, CARES Act funding line item also for expense. So that, this would bring your total budget to fifty-nine million five hundred and twenty thousand eight hundred and seventy-seven dollars. So I would ask you to schedule a public hearing for the October meeting to amend the budget.
So moved.
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Second, any other discussion? All for the vote.
Bryan.
Yes.
Matthews.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Bryan.
Yes.
Alan.
Yes.
Miles.
Yes.
Chambers.
Yes.
Motion unanimous? Um, recommendation of laws controlled ordinance committee to schedule a public hearing for a revised laws control ordinance? Don't move. Have a motion for that?
Second.
Motion made, second, in the, in the discussion?
Mr. Chairman, if, if I may, um, I've had some of my constituents reach out to me with regards to the, on page five of ten on the draft ordinance, item number thirteen, lawful discharge of firearms not to exceed more than two hours every six hours or lawful hunting. And, um, I'd personally like to see the committee take this up in terms of, or hear from what the reasoning behind that was. I've had several people reach out to me today with regards to that and, um, where that language came from, so. I'd like to see that, that worked on.
And I like to see the change on this, uh, the decimals, sixty-five decimals is, is pretty low. I'm talking more than sixty-five decimals right now. So I, I think we need to look at that at least, if nothing else, bring a meter in here and let's listen to it. Let everybody understand what sixty-five decimals or whatever you're gonna say.
That's why I think it should go back to committing.
I think it should go back to the committee too. And then, um, this distance with the cars, some of this noise you hear, it's probably fifty feet. That, I put back to twenty-five feet myself. Some people got it wide open, can't, you know. And I think you ought to change, add a little bit to it, because not only is it audible, but some of the ugly talk, it comes out to some of these radios, you ride through that. I got my grandchildren with me and I don't want to hear all that.
That was actually discussed, Danny. Um, one of the things that we talked about was, um, and, and we talked at length about the decimal level. Um, and Jordan about the shooting. What we talked about was if I'm inside my house and my doors and windows are closed and I can hear your music inside my house with my doors and windows closed, you're violating this ordinance. Okay? So that's, that's where that came from. And I understand that normal laughter is probably about sixty-five decibels. We had even talked about the sheriff's deputies having decibel meters, uh, they are expensive. One of the conditions that we thought about for the shooting was, um, it prevents somebody that doesn't live in this county from coming down here on a weekend and wanna shoot all day long and disturb their neighbors when they could be going to a range to shoot. So, you know, it's more for, for peace and quiet for the people that live here in the county. And, you know, once again, the noise ordinance was established, the key words in the noise ordinance are at the beginning. It says, if I can hear it inside my house with the doors and windows closed. And, and that was my, my key question to, uh, Mr. Wright, Danny, was, you know, what about the person that, that wants to sit at the end of my driveway? And, you know, the peanut butter gonna kill your mother and I can hear every bass sound that he has, you know? Then, yeah, he's, they're violating the noise ordinance, so. But to answer your question, you know, as far as what they play, I, I, you know, there's not a lot we can do about that. Sheriff can tell you that, you know, that's pretty much free speech, what they want to listen to, what they want to play.
As long as you listen to it in your own vehicle, they ain't gonna let everybody else listen to it.
Right, where I don't have to hear it with my doors closed and my windows closed.
That's right. Vulgar, vulgar language is, shouldn't be allowed anywhere.
I understand that, but Sheriff, I know you've gotten a call about the sign on the Bell Road. It's a, it's a rather vulgar statement on the Bell Road and it's pinned to a tree. And I called myself and asked about it and there's really, under free speech, there's not a lot you can do.
Do you have anything you'd like to say about it, Mr. K? About? Okay, I don't blame you. All right.
Well, we had Sergeant Moody, um, from the sheriff's office. Well, we had Sergeant Moody from the sheriff's office on the committee. He did raise some concerns on several issues of, you know, would it be enforceable? And we had to reword a couple of things to make it enforceable. And I'd say we've, we've worked on this for, Joe, three, four, five months?
About five months.
Yeah. So.
I have a motion. We have a public hearing on the thirteenth?
We already did, Mr. Chairman.
Yep, and I second it.
Okay, we have a motion. Any other discussion? All for the vote.
Bryant?
Yes.
Matthews?
No.
Davis?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Allen?
No.
Miles?
No.
Chambers?
Yes.
Four yeses.
Three noes. Current. Commissioner Revenue, consider recommendations of Commissioner Love to set the personal property tax relief rate for twenty twenty at thirty-six point twenty-eight percent.
Yes, sir. Each year, the Commissioner Revenue provides you with the personal property tax relief act credit that needs to be applied to keep in line with the state funding. As you all may remember, when the Personal Property Tax Relief Act was first initiated, the state was giving the county back the portion of the relief that the county was required to give them. Now they give us a certain amount every year. And so the Commissioner Revenue then has to set the rate, the percentage for that rate. So this year, it would be thirty-six point twenty-eight percent to keep in line with the state funding. And I think for two thousand and nineteen, it was thirty-six point eighty-two. So a, as you see there, it would be a small increase in what the, the taxpayer would pay. But that's what we have to do to bring it in line with the Personal Property Tax Relief Act.
We need a motion to?
So moved.
Second.
Second, any other discussion? All for the vote.
Bryant?
Yes.
Matthews?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Allen?
Yes.
Miles?
Yes.
Chambers?
Yes.
Current, unanimous. Board of Building Code Appeals Appointment.
Yes, sir. I don't expect you all to be able to make appointments tonight. Wanted to give you some time to think about it, although Supervisor Miles is on there, but he cannot serve being a supervisor. And so we'll need all appointments. And Mr. Ranson's provided me with, and I provided you all with a copy up there this evening about some of the requirements are, I guess you'd say the, what you prefer for those to set on the Board of Zoning Appeals, Board of Building Code Appeals. So I'll be bringing back to you all in the next month, maybe October and November. But sometimes it takes a while to get people to agree to do this, to make those appointments. But I just want to make you aware, it's something we need to do.
We'll need two appointments on that then, because God rushes no longer with us.
Right. Well, none of, all of these terms have expired. So the ones that are still living may still want to continue to serve, but all of them have expired.
What is the term of this particular?
I think three years. I'll tell you, they haven't, they haven't met in over twenty years. They have not met over twenty years.
Three years.
I think it's three, but I'll check and make sure.
I will appoint somebody next, next board meeting. Senator Social Services Emergency Food and Shelter Program Support, a promise from the Board of Supervisors with local emergency food and shelter program support. I think Mr. Chambers has agreed to take that position. Is that right?
Yes, sir.
I'd move we appoint Supervisor Chambers to the Emergency Food and Shelter Program, Mr. Chairman, to represent the Board of Supervisors.
Second.
Motion made, second. We appoint Mr. Chambers on that board. Any other discussion? And on, call for the vote.
Bryant? Matthews?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Allen?
Yes.
Miles?
I'm sorry, yes. I apologize.
Vote, current unanimous. Paul, update on the library. Get your center project. I'll say one thing, you're looking good.
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, I'm glad to report that project is about to wind up and be completed. It's about to be on time and on schedule. They're doing some, you know, testing at the end to make everything sure that it's working correctly. Like, right now, they're doing the HVAC system to make sure it's doing what it should do. This project, I think the people on that committee, seem like their planning took longer than the actual project did, because they've done a great job of getting this project completed, which is no small feat with the pandemic going on, with plants closing, and then with just everything going on this, this year that they haven't done in this time and have to be on time. The library is planning on having an opening to the public on October nineteenth. So they've also wanted, you know, of course, invite the board to have a grand opening to get this project open to the public. I think it's a project that the county will be proud of. I think the board members as well have seen it, are proud of it as well. So when we get that date to have a grand opening, we'll get that to you so you can stop by and kick it off where it should be kicked off. About all I have, Mr. Matthews, you have anything else you want to share? He's on that committee as well.
Just, I just want to thank the board for their foresight in putting the need for this as a priority for our county. And the project has really gone pretty smooth. I think Crabtree and Robal did a great job of design. Rick Ewing did a good job with his input for the library side. We were at a meeting the other day. We meet every two weeks, and to see the progress of what's happened and just, I mean, I was just amazed of what happens just in a short period of time. And, you know, I'm very proud of it. And I mean, I'm saying that, and I've said that all along. It's the best location in the county. I was talking to Todd Shoemaker today. He's just so happy and excited about this new facility that's not just going to help the recreation department, but there's a lot of other people, seniors, women, men. It doesn't make any difference that they're going to be able to utilize this building in the community side of it, the community center part of it, not just the library, but, you know, it's, it's really was a diamond in the rough. I mean, the architects did a great job of designing it.
Not more than a library, really.
It's not, and it's, we're, Ms. Carter has, every week informs me, we're still on target as far as budget, which is another plus. And, you know, we've got a few things that we need to work out here before we open this thing up, but, you know, it's really coming together. Carl's done a great job of keeping everybody on task and talking to the contractors and the architect and making sure everything goes smooth. So, you know, it's really been a great team effort, and I really do appreciate being on that committee. And I'm just really proud of it for, not just for me, but for the citizens of the county. I'm, I'm excited about it.
I might add that Carl has managed this project very well. Greatly appreciated. Mr. Ewing, the library and city so far does plan to open in the middle of October. However, we're working to maybe have a joint grand opening to where people can come in and look and maybe have some finger foods, let the public see the building. But of course, we've got to watch the COVID, what's going on with that. And also, Daniel Queen, our general properties manager, has recommended that we wait a few weeks while it operates to make sure we get everything ironed out before we do do that. So if nothing else, we talked about having tours of maybe five people at a time when we have the open house. So I'll keep you posted on that, too.
I think we can leave that up to you, and you can let us know. All right with y'all?
Yes, sir.
Absolutely.
Thank you, Mr. Carter. Buckingham County Public Schools Membership Report for August twenty twenty. I think everybody has it in their package. Questions about that or any discussion about it? Out of from the fire department, information on capital projects, groundbreaking updates and so on. Yes, all of the members have read that letter that was sent. I don't think there's no action need to be taken on that.
I have a question, Mr. Chairman. Becky? Becky?
Yes, sir.
Under the CARES Act, would the fire departments qualify to receive money under the CARES Act?
I've had some other counties look into that, and I actually did make an request to the state. Don't really answer. Can't find a way that they would qualify for any money. Maybe some, which we have plenty of that we hand out, some.
Okay, but as far as receiving monetary? Okay, thanks.
Matters for the board's consideration, consider resolution memorandum for Officer Bobby Jones.
So moved.
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Motion made, second. Question? All for the vote.
Bryant?
Yes.
Matthews?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Allen?
Yes.
Miles?
Yes.
Chambers?
Yes.
Motion, current unanimous, consider a letter of support for a drug drop box at the sheriff's office. So move.
Second.
Question on that? All for the vote.
Bryant?
Yes.
Matthews?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Allen?
Yes.
Miles?
Yes.
Chambers?
Yes.
Current unanimous. County Administrator, County Attorney Matters, Avenue Thing.
He's watching on the movies, I mean.
Here you come.
No County Matters? County Administrator Report.
Yes, the first item is we have provided you with a letter from the Auditor of Public Accounts stating that, or advising you all that the Treasurer, Commissioner Revenue, and Sheriff's Office has complied in all material aspects with state laws, regulations, and other procedures relating to the receipt, disbursement, and custody of state funds. Also, just notify you that I have been appointed to the Virginia Association of County Self, Group Self-Insurance Risk Pool Supervisory Board. And so that may help with some of the programs. We participate with them, with VACO.
Congratulations on that, Ms. Carter.
Notice of Comcast Investment in Buckingham County. You all may have seen this public release. I received a call the day that it was released from Comcast, and actually received a call, I guess from the newspaper, before I even saw the press release. But that's pretty much all I know. I've had several conversations. I called the congressman's office, senator's office to see where, with this money, how, where the path would be going to assist with internet services. And I don't think that's determined yet, but there isn't, we see there another option to try to get to some homes that are underserved with the internet service. That concludes my report, Mr. Chairman.
Patient of a former.
He did that.
Mr. Paul, you accepted that, I suppose?
Yes. Mm-hmm, yeah, sure he did that.
August building promote, C O R C information.
There are informational items.
All appreciation from the. Bobby, Bobby Jones, or Bobby Jones's family, I'm sure. Total appreciation from the Holiday Lake Education Center. All matters.
Mr. Chairman, thanks again to the board members here for agreeing to provide hotspots to the students in the county. Jamie, can you talk on that a little bit, what, what you've heard? I've heard nothing but great things. We did order recently more. Can you elaborate on that?
Yes, sir. So like Mr. Bryant said, we have heard nothing but good things thus far with this program. They've gone through their first round of distribution. Rounds one and two were last Thursday and Friday. So then they're going to go back and revisit those same numbers, ask them to come back and get some more, or what is left for those who didn't get one, and then go back through, and the new students who now say that they didn't have internet, or their internet was not working quite as well, can now have the opportunity to get more. So we placed an order to force seventy-five more, which makes them, makes the school system at that point have enough access points for everybody that has signed up. So we have enough to distribute to all of those folks now, between Verizon and T-Mobile is the two vendors that we've used.
That means everyone who's signed up for a hotspot will get a hotspot?
Well, we have enough for everyone, yes.
And what's the total number of that?
Six oh one is how many signed up. We have six hundred and fifty on hand. Six oh one. Six hundred and one people signed up for it, and we have like six hundred and fifty on, is what has totally been ordered. So they are.
I think the school superintendent had told us about four hundred, but then the technology manager at the school said about five. But I think what they found was some thought they could use the hotspots off of phones and things, and it just wasn't working well.
Yeah, that's one of the issues we faced when, when we started calling our parents at the beginning of the year. We verified, do you have internet service? And a lot of them said, oh, yeah, I've got the internet. I let them use the hotspot on my phone. And then when I had to explain to them that, that that's not really the internet, because, you know, if you get two kids on there, you're going to drain the hotspot quick.
Absolutely.
So, you know, we started updating our list, and that's, that's how the list grew. We did find, one of the issues that we're facing is, starting the twenty-first, we actually want to be signing on every day with the kids for face-to-face meetings so that we can see them. The issues that we're facing is little Johnny or little Suzie goes to a babysitter, and the babysitter doesn't have the internet. And if we want to be teaching, you know, the quality teaching, then we need to make sure that we can see those kids, too. So that's why we ordered some extras. In case there's a teacher that comes down with it, then, you know, they can have the internet at home to be teaching from home as well.
Part about the little hotspots, because my granddaughter got one. They're wonderful. If she can take that. It's her.
Yes. Right.
And I will say this, Mr. Chairman, and I want to thank Supervisor Bryant. I was reading the Washington Post, and you know, there are a hundred and seventy-one million student, pre, pre-K through twelfth grade students who don't have access to accessible internet in the country in twenty twenty. And I, and I think it's great that, you know, though we're throwing a little pebble in the ocean, it's, ripples are really doing a lot for this county. And I want to thank him and thank the staff for, for what you're doing in, in terms of the infrastructure that we're able to grow to let them have access to education, really. So thank you.
Becky, kudos to Jamie, too, because I called Jamie this weekend, and, and we talked at length this weekend. Thanks, you know, for taking my call and getting it in action as quick as we did, so that there's no. that there's no interruption for the kids, so.
Done a good job. He's worked really hard. We've been running, we've been running him very hard.
Thank you, Mr. Schumacher. Yes, executive, closing session is the next line.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we go into executive closed session under section 2.2-3711A.3. Discussion or consideration of the acquisition of real property for a public purpose or of the disposition of publicly held real property where discussion in an open meeting would adversely affect the bargaining position or negotiating strategy of the public body. And section 2.2-3711A.5. Discussion concerning the prospective business or industry or the expansion of an existing business or industry where no previous announcement has been made of the business or industry's interest in locating or expanding its facilities in the community.
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Motion made in second, did we go into executive session? Call for the vote.
Bryant.
Yes.
Matthews.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Brian.
Yes.
Alan.
Yes.
Miles.
Yes.
Chambers.
Unanimous.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we return to open session and certification that to the best of each board member's knowledge only business matters related to the code of which the executive meeting was convened was discussed or considered in the closed executive session.
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Motion made second, we returns to open session. Question up, all in favor, all ready to vote?
Bryant?
Yes.
Matthews?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Bryan?
Yes.
Allen?
Yes.
Miles?
Yes.
Chambers?
Yes.
Made unanimous.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we set a public hearing October 13th for the sale of the Gold Hill School building and area to In-House Pharmacy Partners for the sum of $600,000.
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Motion made, second.
Mr. Miles seconded.
All right, motion made second, y'all heard the motion, question, all for the vote?
Bryant?
Yes.
Matthews?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Bryan?
Yes.
Allen?
Yes.
Miles?
Yes.
Chambers?
Yes.
Motion unanimous.
Bateman has some IDA, doesn't it?
Since board, hold on, board recess and reconvene on Mondays September 21st at seven o'clock, adjourned work session with the planning commission. All right, good night.